Thank you, John. Do I have a second? Sean, all those in favor? Thank you. We have moved out of executive session. The board will take a 15 minute recess and we will commence with the regular meeting at seven o'clock.
I move that we exit. I move that we exit the executive session.
Thank you, John. Do have a second? Sean, all those in favor? Thank you. We have moved out of executive session. The board will take a 15-minute recess and we will commence with the regular meeting at 7:00. Good evening, everyone. I call to order this vote of education meeting regular session. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. The first item on our agenda is the RPS showcase, Dr. DeSilva or Ms. George?
So, in just a moment, my colleagues, Principal Salem, Ms. Faustoli, and do I see Dr. Greenwood here? No, but no worries. I know that we will be able to introduce our students who have planned to speak to us tonight on a very important program that we have in our schools, supported by the ADL, the Anti-Defamation League, and the program is "No Place for Hate." So, we have our ERMs, SERMs, and RHS students. Welcome and thank you for being here. And Ms. Faustoli is going to start?
Hello. Yes, that is working. Hello. Jennifer Faustoli, principal at Eastridge. Before we get started, I did just want to introduce the advisors from each school. Actually, Mr. Salem first.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for having us. It's such an awesome opportunity for you to get a chance to get a glimpse into the work that all of these wonderful students, led by a phenomenal group of teachers, are doing in both buildings. And I'll turn it back over to Jen.
And so, we have our advisors from Scotts Ridge and Eastridge, and they're going to introduce themselves. Maureen Tyra.
Emily Sherwell.
Michael Hugaison.
Okay, so, the "No Place for Hate" initiative is sponsored by the Anti-Defamation League. Currently, both SERMs and ERMs are in their third year of the program, and the high school is in their fourth year of the program. The goal of the program is to build and maintain a positive climate through promoting allyship in response to bias and prejudice. The program requires schools to form a "No Place for Hate" committee, have a school-wide "No Place for Hate" pledge signing every year, and hold at least three different activities throughout the school year that emphasizes a discussion component where the students are asked to process whatever they just experienced in connection to the pledge. This evening, we have two students, two "No Place for Hate" student ambassadors from each school to share with you what the program means to them and to describe how it is positively impacting our school communities. I'm going to turn it over to our Eastridge students right now.
Hello, I'm Charlie Tanana.
And I'm Jenna Rolowitz. To me, "No Place for Hate" is a program that promotes teamwork and communication, allowing everyone to feel included in everyday activities. It is a way to strengthen our community by working together.
In my opinion, "No Place for Hate" schools provide a safer community for new students as well as students and faculty enrolled in the community. The pledge we embraced and practiced by all, when embraced and practiced by all, can bring a profound impact. Even the smallest effort to eradicate hate from our thoughts and daily lives can make a world of difference. By adopting this approach, we can guarantee a more secure and joyful atmosphere for all.
As an eighth grader who's been at Eastridge since the school joined the "No Place for Hate" program, I've seen many changes to students' behavior that have clearly affected not only their peers, but themselves as well. In sixth grade, I often saw many students unintentionally tease others, including their friends. As years have progressed, I have noticed less of this antagonistic behavior and more supportive actions in those who are willing to stand up to their peers. I've seen students change and grow more empathetic toward one another, even toward those they aren't necessarily close to.
Being in "No Place for Hate" school has led to a positive change in the community. A recent decrease in inappropriate jokes related to race, gender, ethnicities among our peers is from our "No Place for Hate" program and resources. ERMs provides a strong support system for students who use its resources. As a seventh grader, I've noticed our schools have become more welcoming and inclusive as our peers have become more conscious of others' needs. Less gossip and rumors have made our school less of a rumor mill and more of a community where everyone helps everyone. Yes, we still need to grow and change, but that is part of life and what we as humans do and strive to be the best in ourselves and others. Thank you.
Reflecting on my involvement in the "No Place for Hate" program, I really am able to see the positive effects of this club. For example, one activity allowed us to converse about experiences and reflect on our lives during an author visit. We also created a banner that illustrated school pride and included the participation of every student in our school. Having open discussions with teachers, authors, and fellow students during NPFH activities helped me recognize that each of us are unique and our ideas could come together to do amazing things. At our "No Place for Hate" testimonials assembly, hearing the stories from the high school students helped me realize what an ally, bystander, and perpetrator is in real life and the impact on others. Throughout the last two years, I have seen a lot of growth and awareness of these concepts and continue to be excited to hear each person's voice. I am grateful for the "No Place for Hate" program. Thank you. And my name is Haraj Karthkane.
Hello, I'm Cassidy Morehouse from SERMs. And I can already see the difference between the school that was before and now. We have tried to create as many opportunities as we can to raise awareness to different issues, especially bullying. We not only created projects within the school, but also collaborated with the high school for school-wide assemblies. High school students from their "No Place for Hate" club shared their experiences with the middle school, which made people think about how they could change for the better in their lives. It surely made me feel that way. Being in "No Place for Hate" schools created opportunities for students to think and act for the better, helping and caring for others, including others, and just being a good ally for people who need it. Throughout the program, we tried to create an inclusive, safe, and happy environment for all students, and I believe we are doing just that.
Hi, I'm Natalia Feliciano. I'm one of the panelists from "No Place for Hate" at RHS. And to me, being a "No Place for Hate" school means that students are more conscious and cognizant of our behaviors and actions. It would be impossible to eliminate hate from our school completely, but hopefully, through our work in the speeches and the breakout rooms, students have begun to understand their own identities more clearly. Through this understanding, students should realize that we are all a part of RHS and our differences help to make a unique and diverse student body that should be celebrated.
Hello, my name is Lloyd Mills and I'm also a "No Place for Hate" panelist at RHS. And to me, our school being a "No Place for Hate" school means that every person purposely puts in an effort to not only prevent hate and bullying, but also promote inclusivity. Being a "No Place for Hate" school also means that the students have control over what the environment is like and are able to make it more positive through action. One way that "No Place for Hate" has helped in creating this environment is by facilitating inclusion in clubs like Unified Sports and Unified Theater, which are recent additions to RHS and reflect the positive impact of "No Place for Hate" on the school culture. Thank you.
I'd like to give them a round of applause because I think they're... Just a couple of quick comments. One thing I think our community should be really proud about is the fact that the three schools are three of only 17 schools in the state of Connecticut to be designated "No Place for Hate" schools, which is a pretty amazing accomplishment and requires a ton of dedication on behalf of the teachers and the students. And I wish that all of you could have been at the high school because obviously, with Scotts Ridge's very small auditorium, anything that we have to do full school has to be moved to the high school. But I wish you could have been there to witness how incredible our high school students were articulating their own personal experiences and then watching the faces of our children in the audience receiving that. And just the care and concern, it really hit home for a lot of our students. And I applaud them because it's not easy to do that, to get up in front of, you know, a big group like that and express themselves. And so, I wanted to say that publicly to them because I think it was incredible. But really, the kudos for this goes to the teachers who lead it and the students who are dedicated to it each and every day. And we're really, really proud to be a part of it. So, thank you for giving us this opportunity to listen to this program.
Thank you so incredibly much.
Okay, thank you. All right. Moving on to the next item on our agenda, public comment. Okay, hearing none, public comment will be at the... There's an opportunity at the end of the meeting as well. Moving on to reports. I have a very quick update. First, I hope...
First, I hope everybody had a good spring break. Just a board committee update. Ms. London cannot make the policy meeting, so Ms. Moore will be stepping into that committee to balance it out. Thank you, Ms. Moore. The past week was Bus Driver Appreciation Week. On behalf of the Board of Education, a big thank you to all our drivers for everything that you do to ensure our kids are safely transported. Next week is Teacher Appreciation Week. I think it's not enough words, but we, on behalf of the board, to all the teachers, thank you. Quick reminders. Next Monday is the town meeting, May 6. It is at half seven, 7:30 at Eastridge Middle School. So we hope you can attend that meeting, and we encourage community members to attend that meeting. Very quickly, looking into June, we have two updates. For all the parents, please keep a lookout for a board outreach. The idea of that outreach is we would like to hear from our parents or community of all the things that they celebrated this year and look what they would like the next school year for the district and the board to look for 2024. We'll share an update of that date pretty soon. The second update for June is usually the last meeting of the school year is canceled. This time, the meeting of the Board of Ed lands on June 24, but we will be having the meeting. And as I shared with the board, I would like to share with the community, we've invited our legislators. They will be joining us. And our goal for that meeting is to hear how new educational bills are impacting school districts all over our state, but of course, keeping a focus on Ridgefield. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mahaltra. I'd like to echo Ms. Mahaltra's comments this evening. Last week was Bus Driver Appreciation Week. We'd like to thank our bus drivers for their dedication, commitment to our students and families. Our students absolutely love their drivers, and we've been incredibly grateful for the service that they've provided. So a big thank you to them. This week is busy. We have the RHS Orchestra Concert tomorrow evening. For those of you that are interested in another musical, we have Peter Pan at Scotland. That's tomorrow night, Wednesday night. We have the Inclusion Expo... Sorry, sorry, wait a minute. Tonight's... Yes, we have the RHS Orchestra Concert tomorrow. But if you'd prefer, not that you do, but just in case you prefer, Scotland has Peter Pan, or maybe you prefer the orchestra concert. Up to you, but they're happening at approximately the same time tomorrow night. We have the Inclusion Expo. We hope that the Board of Education members can at least stop by. Just prior or during the event starts at 6:00 PM. At ERM's, all are invited, come one, come all. I think I heard my colleague say that on her video. And I think we have at least 70 RSVPs. We're hoping that that grows a bit. On Thursday night, we have our RHS art show, so we encourage the community to make their way to the high school to view the terrific art of all types surrounding our building. Next week, as Ms. Mahaltra shared, it is Teacher Appreciation Week, I believe, and I hope, and I know, I hope, that our teachers recognize the importance and the value that they bring to our students' lives each and every day. The reality is, they are the most important variable. We all know that. We know that they know that. But just in case, we're letting you know one more time. We're lucky to have them as colleagues and partners. We're incredibly fortunate in this community. Finally, as the community is aware, this past week at ERM's, while our faculty was preparing the outdoor equipment, they came to find a hate expression written on one of our pieces of equipment. The equipment was covered for most of the winter and just uncovered as they were preparing for spring and for its use. Seeing the word on the equipment for those students that were outside was incredibly disturbing, as we could all imagine. Our schools, our board, our teachers, and it was clear tonight, our students stand firmly against any form of hate. We're asking that our families join us in ensuring that Ridgefield as a whole is a welcoming and inclusive community in and outside of the schools for each and every person. While we don't know when this was written or who wrote it, it doesn't matter. It was written in our community. And no one could have said it better than our students this evening. It wasn't actually planned, I have to tell you. They came here tonight. They spoke pretty strongly in that, I think pretty loud and clear, actually, that Ridgefield is no place for hate. So if you come here with hate, I suggest you go somewhere else because there's no place for hate here. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. De Silva. Moving on to committee chair and liaison reports. Sean.
Sure, I'll go with that. We did have an Energy Task Force meeting last week. The big item that everybody is excited about is the solar canopy coming soon to the high school, finally. Cover the entire senior lot and provide about a third of that building's electricity.
Thank you, Sean. Tom.
Last week, I believe it was, the Strategic Planning Committee met and heard about our urgent facility needs at the Alternative High School, the 18 to 22 transition program, and the preschool, and the efforts being made to address those urgent needs. And it's my understanding we'll be hearing more about that to come.
Thank you, Tom. Christine.
The Ridgefield Prevention Council met last week, and they have solidified a date for the Asset Builder event, and it's going to be on May 29 at the Ridgefield Library from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. And it's, it looks like a great event. So detailed information about contributing factors to the healthy development of our kids. So if anyone's interested, go on to the website and sign up.
Thank you, Christine. Anyone else? Moving on to the approval of the April 8 minutes. Do we have a motion?
I move that the Board of Education approve the minutes from the meeting on April 8, 2024.
Thank you, John. Do we have a second? Christine. Any edits? There is one. For the PTA president, it says Kelly DeBald. It was Angela Rice. Are there any other edits? All right, hearing none. Does the board approve the minutes with the edited name from Ms. Kelly DeBald to Ms. Rice? All those in favor approving the minutes, please raise your hand. Eight, thank you. Motion carries. All right, moving on to discussion and possible action items. The first item on the agenda is the teacher non-renewals. Do we have a motion?
Yes, I move that the Board of Education approve notification to Monica Sobosinski and Nicole Weintraub of non-renewal of their contracts at the close of the 2023 to 24 school year and that the superintendent of schools is directed to advise such persons in writing of this action.
Thank you, John. Do we have a second? Selena. All those in favor of the recommendation, please raise your hand. Eight, it's unanimous. And thank you to the teachers. Moving on. A recommendation to approve the new resource for math at RHS. Do we have a motion?
Yes, I move that the Board of Education approve and envision AGA, Algebra I, Geometry, Algebra II, to serve as an anchor resource for Ridgefield High School-level mathematics courses.
Thank you, John. Do we have a second? Christine. Are there any additional questions? Hearing none. All those in favor of adoption of the textbook, please raise your hand. Eight, unanimous. Thank you. Motion carries. All right, next item, RPS, a district of choice.
Thank you, Dr. Corbischle. And you can go home. Okay, thank you, everybody. So tonight, we're going to be talking to the Board of Education, to the community, and hopefully, those individuals who are thinking about where they may want to work next school year. Why RPS is a district of choice. The presentation led by Ms. Karen Duing and our team... Next slide. Will describe how the board, how the district supports the Board of Education on their goal, which is to become an employer of choice for highly qualified educators. More specifically, the board recognizes the need for the district to attract, hire, and retain administrators and educators who will further the district's achievement of academic excellence. So we're, tonight, we're going to share how we, as a district, support this Board of Education goal. We're going to be paying most attention to the certified employees. So what we're really talking about tonight is our teachers and our administrators. Next slide. The purpose of tonight's presentation is to share RPS's robust practices for the recruitment and retention of the high-quality faculty workforce so that RPS can continue to meet its mission in an ever-evolving educational landscape that seems to change day by day. I'll now turn it over to my colleague, Karen. Next slide, John. Okay, Karen.
All right, thank you, Dr. De Silva. So our agenda tonight, first, we will share our recruitment practices. We'll show you where we post our vacancies in order to attract those educators to the Ridgefield Public Schools. Then we'll briefly talk about our hiring practices, and then we will share our retention strategies that we utilize in order to retain the teachers that we have here already. John, next slide. So recruitment. How and where do we recruit? So first and foremost is our Ridgefield website. We have an online application, so any candidate to the Ridgefield Public Schools must go to our website. They must complete this online application. So perhaps the website could be their first introduction to the district. So it's important to us that that website really shows that it's a welcoming, inclusive environment, that it's user-friendly, and that it really shows what we want to portray about our, our culture here in the district. So last year, it was a priority of ours to look at the website and make updates to really show what we wanted to communicate through that. And I want to thank members of my Ridgefield Diverse Workforce Advisory Committee, Allison Pratt, our Communication Specialist, Cory, and Wes. It was really a team effort to work on this website. And so John is going to just give a little overview of what you'll see when you go to our website.
And you can see the tabs up on the right. John, can you just click on a couple of those? Here's a directive right to our application process. The following tab is our testimonials, which you'll see in just a bit. This is the work that's happening in our diverse workforce. And I think we have one more tab on the right, John? And there we go, right back to... Thank you.
All right. Thank you, John. Thank you, Susie. So in addition to our website, we post our vacancies on two statewide recruitment sites, mainly for educators. In Connecticut, that's CTREAP, and in New York State, that's OLS. So we do belong to those, and we do post every educator vacancy and administrator vacancy on those platforms. In addition, annually, we send a team of five administrators and/or department chairs to the UConn NIAG School of Education Job Fair. We love going to UConn. Fortunately, each year, we've been successful in hiring some graduates. We've already hired somebody for next school year already coming out of that job fair. I do want to also thank Tony Showa, Assistant Director of Special Education, and Wes for their works in helping really modernize our technology when we go. We used to have the tri, you know, tri-board thing with paper, and now we have, you know, computers and laptops and scrolling, you know, videos. And so it's really made such a big difference, and I'm really appreciative of that. In addition, with Allison Pratt, we have internal ways that we advocate and advertise through podcasts, our newsletters, after families, social media outlets. So that's more of our local community, but it's important, too, that people then know what our vacancies are and what positions we're looking to hire. We do use still print and the Danbury News Times and the Ridgefield Press. So I do want to preface that not every position is posted in all of these avenues. And although the purpose of tonight's presentation is mainly for certified educators, we do post in these places, and typically, they can be for non-certified groups. Through the Ridgefield Diverse Workforce Advisory Committee, we are continuing to look at non-traditional ways to advertise. So that's still a work in progress that we're looking at in part of our long-term goals. But through that committee, we did enhance our connections with universities' career centers and career services. And so we have joined Simplicity and Handshake, and so we have postings on career services in over 100 different colleges and universities across the nation. In addition, and this, too, is for mainly non-certified, but we will look at private recruitment sites like Indeed and Monster.com when that's appropriate. And then, last but not least, our recommendations from professional colleagues. Word of mouth is really important. So we do collect data on where did you find our vacancy? And the top ones are our website, CTREAP and OLS, and colleague referral. Those are where we get most of our candidates from. All right, John, next slide. Moving on to our hiring process, we do have a comprehensive hiring and interview process. So I did tell you that we have an online application process. So every position is posted. We receive those online applications, and the building administrators are required to review every single application that's submitted. They then will narrow that down to a smaller pool, and they will conduct virtual screenings. These are 10 to 15-minute, you know, Google Meet screenings in order to allow a candidate to bring their resume materials to life. Following that, that pool then is narrowed down, and we have building-based interview committees. These are led by the building administrators along with department chairs, department leaders, grade-level teachers. It's very specific to whatever the vacancy that they're hiring with. I do want to say that our schools do interview collectively, meaning we have six elementary schools. So even though a position may be available, say at Branchville, that committee will have principals from other schools because we believe that we're hiring for the district. will have principals from other schools because we believe that we're hiring for the district. We're not just hiring, say, for Branchville. That is a process that, through central office, we really have changed over the last couple of years, and it's been very beneficial. In addition to the building-level interviews, sometimes you have central office interviews if we're looking for, say, a principal, and some of you, as Board of Ed members, may have been part of that interview committee. Following that, we then narrow the pool down even more, and then we do demonstration lessons or performance tasks, depending upon the position. That's where we really want to see the content knowledge of the candidates and see them in action. For teaching positions, we have them actually teach students, and that even includes in the summer. We will have kids that will come in over the summer and form a little class and allow us to have the candidates conduct those demonstration lessons. Through our application process, we require three letters of recommendation, and then at this stage, we require at least two reference checks, and that must include an immediate supervisor of that candidate. So then, hopefully, through this process, we have narrowed down who the principal thinks is the best candidate to move forward. The principal will then make a recommendation to interview with the superintendent. And so, that final interview will include Dr. De Silva and myself, and either Cory, if it's a general ed position, or Liz, if it's a special ed position. And then that is a full-fledged interview, whether or not we determine whether or not that person will be offered a contract with the Ridgefield Public Schools. Okay? John, next slide? So then, we have a comprehensive onboarding process. So, we begin this process with the mentality of customer service, and that literally begins at that final central office interview. So, if we're fortunate that this person's offered a job, Susie will say, "It's my pleasure. I get to offer you to the Ridgefield, you know, a job with the Ridgefield Public Schools. You're going to stay on with Karen." I then get to stay on and start the onboarding process, and I go through and talk about what their salary offer is, and that's personal to them. It's based upon years of experience and the degrees. I talk about the benefits plan, health insurance, teacher retirement, sick days, personal days, background checks, and give them a brief overview of what they're going to expect. So, my office, over these years, has really made this process an electronic process. All of our new hire packet is electronic, so everybody has immediate access to the information that they need. We really want it to be, you know, user-friendly, have the resources you need, one-stop shopping. When they come into my office, they're getting fingerprinted, they're getting their paperwork done. And then, I work closely with the business office and Technology Department because we get them into IV for payroll, and then we do Google Tickets so that they can get their badges, their email access, their computer. We have new teacher orientation, where Jill is there to talk about, "How do you read your paycheck? What does HSA mean?" Different components of what it's like to perhaps have this be your first job. Technology will come and say, "You're coming to Scotts Ridge, and we're going to all get you your logins right now together." We really want it to be a smooth onboarding process that is personalized, depending upon when it happens, but gives them what they need. While we're doing all that, the schools are doing their own. They're giving them the curriculum resources that they need, any of the books, materials. So, we really do try to make sure that it's a smooth process when you're coming to the Ridgefield Public Schools, and that it's a customer service mentality. John, next slide? As you know, you've heard the term, you know, growth mindset. We really do want to continue to improve and solicit feedback so that we can always get better at what we do. So, we have multiple ways throughout the year that we solicit feedback, not just for new hires, but from all of our teachers. But one thing that came out of the Diverse Workforce Advisory Committee was we did institutionalize a new hire survey, so we've done that now two Septembers in a row. That survey asked questions from, "How was the website? Was it user-friendly? How was the application? How was the building-level interview process? How was the onboarding process? What feedback do you have for us?" And so, we take that information, and we continue to look at our practices. As I said before, well, perhaps I did, we do have a new teacher orientation. At the end of that, right before school starts, we solicit feedback, and we've made changes to our new teacher orientation process because of that feedback. One thing that is less formal, but almost more important, is the individual conversations that we have just with our teachers, and that's at the building level and the principals, and more importantly, it's my colleagues here at the central office, where they're in classrooms, they're talking to our teachers, and they're getting feedback from them about what it's, you know, what do they need and how are things going? And that's just a more, you know, genuine process that occurs continuously. Professional learning, as you know, we have collaborative hours, we have early release days, we have full PD days, and Cory's office always says, you know, "Please give us this feedback at the end of each session. We want to know what you need, and we want to know how we're doing." And then finally, we do do exit surveys, and I get this is when somebody's leaving, but people leave for multiple reasons, doesn't have to be bad reason, they could be retiring. And then, although we used to do exit interviews selectively, the state statute now requires that we do an exit survey, this was effective January 1st, of all employees, so we do ask them to complete this survey. Because even if you're leaving, whether it's because you're retiring or you're resigning, we really want to know, "How was your experience here?" Because we do use that, as I said, as we, you know, plan and move forward. All right? John, next slide? So, as I said, for that new hire survey, we have lots of questions, and one of the questions is, "Why Ridgefield?" And although there's quotes here, I'll let you read the quotes. I went through the survey again in preparation for this presentation to go, "What were the themes? What were people saying?" And many of the responses kept using the word "reputation, reputation, reputation," and it just made me think, yeah, our reputation's out there, and it's a small world, the education world. People live in Ridgefield, they have friends in other districts, they may live in other districts, and so people talk. And so, what it's like in Ridgefield, people know, and they know our reputation as not just an excellent district, but also about our culture. And so, part of what I saw in those responses was, one, access and supportive administration. That is huge, especially from somebody that's been here for a long time, and I know what it's like to have a really supportive administration for our faculty and staff. Other topics were kind of like risk-taking, autonomy, and you're going to hear about that a little bit later in our presentation. And then it also talked about, some of the responses were, "I know that the town, the partnership with the town, I know the commitments to the arts," and actually, somebody talked about the commitment to world language because they must have followed our Board of Ed budget and knew we were doing world language. So, like, my mantra here is, you know, people are watching and listening, and they are coming here because of that reputation. John, next slide? Another question we ask is, "What were you looking for in a district?" Because maybe you're looking for something that we don't provide. And so, I'm not going to read the bullets, you can read the bullets, but those were the main responses of what they were looking for in a district. And so, really, my message for this slide is, this is what we're doing. Like, we were really pleased when we saw this, and I remember Cory going, "Yes, this is what we do." Like, you know, excited in that, obviously, we want to know if there's things that people are looking for. We want to always make sure we do that. But for first glance, in what they said, we really felt proud that those are the things that are important to us as a district, and that's probably part of why, in the first slide, they chose Ridgefield as well. But once they're here, that's just not enough. It's keeping them here. And so, for next slide, John, for culture and climate, I'm going to turn it over to my colleagues Cory and Liz.
Thank you, Karen. So, as Karen's been speaking about, a huge piece to our work is making sure that we keep the high-quality staff who we hire and faculty. And so, for us, that comes down to two things, at least, I'll speak for me, Cory, and Susie, and that's communication, and it's the building of the culture. So, there is a community feel in our buildings, and that's not by accident. That is a very clear conversation that we have at the cabinet level, as well as at every leadership level. What are we doing to support ongoing community within our buildings? And that's helping people feel connected, that they're valued, that their work is seen, and that it's relevant. And communication is a huge piece of feedback that we get from staff that helps to build that culture. So, culture doesn't mean ongoing positivity. It means making sure people feel like they have a voice and a place in where they are. So, some of that includes shout-outs and celebrations and highlighting staff, but it also means having tough conversations in clear and kind ways, and that means also us making ourselves available for feedback. I'll give you an example. Just last week, a principal and I sat down with a staff member who said, "As a result of an interview process, you know, I think we can do better in some of our mentorship supports for new teachers." That person felt comfortable to sit with their principal and one of the assistant superintendents of schools to give them that feedback, and then we had a follow-up conversation to talk about what exactly they had in mind and ideas. So, it's not a one-way street, and, you know, I felt like it was a really useful conversation, and that's the kind of environment that we're trying to support because we can't think of everything, and we don't have a pulse on everything that's happening at the same time. We need that give and take in communication. And then, you know, the themes that you see come up, as we somehow, this has hung on behind us, literally and figuratively, level up. But there's also a lot of power behind that, and we saw that after COVID, that each year, when we rally behind a theme, yes, it includes some fun to start the school year, but it really has grown for the staff to provide them with grounding when parts of the school year have become really hard. In the larger social media world, post-COVID, there's a lot of negativity around teaching and the educational environment, and we've heard that from staff, how they are happy to be working in an environment that is the anti-negativity sometimes that they will see. And some of it's fun and in jest, but it does wear on our teachers, and so I think they are appreciative to work in an environment that brings that kind of joyfulness, as you say, all the time. Thanks.
If I could add a couple of things. Relationships are part of what makes the culture and climate here so special and really so different. I've worked in many other districts, and there's not typically a connection between central offices and the buildings in the way that we have here. We know how important it is for our teachers, for us to be visible, and that's in times of celebrations. We try to go to every single thing. We can't always, but at least one of the three of us tries to get there. But really, also, in hard times, and actually, when Liz and Karen were talking, I was thinking about the recent hard time that we shared as a district, and I know that for our teachers seeing us there, even though we weren't talking, it wasn't about us at all, but we're there with them all the time. So, those relationships really matter, and really, looking at all of you and thinking about the relationships that we have with the Board of Education, the support from you, the support between the boards and the town boards. It means a lot to us and our team when the Board of Finance approves our budget as-is, that you did that, that you trusted us, that you saw that that budget was made by our teachers, our administrators, and our team. It was a joint effort. And to know that those layers, the NEA, the PTAs, all those connections, when our teachers see all those different community boards and organizations coming together to do what's best for a district, that creates a certain feeling. There are districts that don't have that kind of unity across those boards, and you can feel it. It's hard to describe the negative of it, but I can tell you that the positive of it is really what continues to build that culture and climate. And also, really, ultimately, a strong culture and climate is what is best for our students because when our teachers go to school and they feel that joy, and they see the silliness around the leveling up, and they see our dressing up, they see the spirit days, the sing-alongs, all of that, when they see that people show up happy and willing to take risks, that makes a difference for kids at the end of the day. Next slide, please. So, here are some pictures, and I just want to, look at Principal Faustoli there. I made her wear that glow-in-the-dark stuff for the convocation, and look how happy she is, all in. She's all in right there. Okay. So, next slide, please. Might have been a...
Yep.
No? Okay. So, another way that we retain our teachers is through the continued opportunities for growth and support. We have a super-strong commitment to professional learning. I actually went and looked at the budget book since I've been here, and we have increased our budget line for conference and training, which really supports all of the conferences that our teachers PK-12 use to go out and about and engage in professional conferences locally and nationally. And that budget line has increased 116% since the 21-22 school year, and we're proud of that. I don't know if you saw, the Board of Finance asked us about it, and we spoke to it. And when we're sitting in interviews, in the process that Karen described, they know that about us, and they're excited to hear it. And not only are they excited to hear about all the professional learning opportunities, but they're also excited to hear that that's done in collaboration. It's not about just sending one teacher out and about in the world, which is amazing, but it's about the communities of teachers and the community of learners that we support. Another thing that's really important to our teachers is that RPS is a place where people can grow. We have done a lot of work to try to build our in-house, this year, our in-house teacher leadership support. So, we ran our own teacher leader program. It was a multi-day course for our teachers. And again, if you look at our administrators, many of our administrators have been hired from within. So, we want our teachers to see this as a place they can grow within the teacher seat. They don't have to leave the seat of being a teacher. That's one of the best and hardest jobs, but we also want them to know that there's other leadership opportunities, and we know how much that's important. And I think finally, just in thinking about this, the important thing, too, and it does go back to culture and climate, and it also goes to growth and support, is that we constantly remind our teachers that they're not alone in the journey. Teaching is complex, and meeting the whole child where they are is complex, and we really take a collaborative team approach. And again, those relationships are part of what help bring that to life for our teachers so that they know that they're not in it alone. So, I'm going to turn it over to Liz.
Special education is an incredibly difficult field to hire for right now because it is a shortage area. So, if you're a special educator, you have your pick in terms of districts. And so, one of the things that we particularly focus on in getting feedback from those people who we hire is, you know, what made you come and what made you say repeatedly, "Training and professional learning is the number-one response." Access to high-quality training, feeling like they're receiving professional learning that's relevant for them and is connected to general education is by far what they have said, you know, "This is really what made the difference for me in choosing." Of course, there's other responses as well, but uniformly, the professional learning is the biggest response, and I think that that has helped them feel even more connected to the district. There's a silo effect that comes in with special education, and I think that professional learning has really kind of helped break down a lot of those walls.
I'm just looking at the picture up on the slide, and I'm seeing, you know, Christine Hopkinson, who was an English teacher at the high school, who's now an assistant principal. And then there's Principal Faustoli, who was an assistant principal at the high school and now is the principal of the middle school. And a social studies teacher at the high school before that. So, just, I didn't even realize that until I saw that picture. Next slide, John?
So, these, as Karen had referenced on the hiring website, these are testimonials from a variety of folks who have been in the district, either brand-new hires, like Brendan Leslie, or Katie Blake, and then some folks who have been more veteran, like Project Opal, and Caitlin Root's been here for a little while. And so, it's just a range for people to see different types of roles and what their feedback is in the district. And I think that they do make a difference. People want to see representation, and so you have a family consumer science teacher, a math specialist, a fourth-grade teacher, an elementary music teacher. It's not just a sea of general ed teachers who we're seeking feedback from. Next slide, please, John.
John, can you present the video?
Joining Ridgefield was the best decision I have made in my 15-year teaching career because of the investment that they made in me and all of the teachers here in our school. Ridgefield is my district of choice because I knew that they would hold me to high expectations and challenge me while offering me leadership opportunities and allowed me to build on those skills.
I was introduced to the Ridgefield Public Schools at the Yukon Niag Career Fair when I was in grad school three years ago, and I absolutely fell in love with the district. I met Tim Salem and Dr. Anthony Showa, and I knew that this was the place for me right off the bat.
The entire interview process was really warm and inviting and made me feel really welcomed, all the way up until the last interview with Susie and Liz, where it made me feel like I was really wanted, and that is ultimately why I chose to be here. They've also given me so many opportunities to build on my leadership now that I have my admin certification, and this really is just the place for me.
Hi, my name is JD Sisay. I'm a third-grade teacher here at Farmingville Elementary School. I started off in the Ridgefield Public Schools last year at Barlow Elementary as a building sub, and then a fifth-grade leave replacement until the end of the year. I was lucky to get this third-grade position, and I have been loving it so much. In Ridgefield, I feel very comfortable and safe here.
I choose Ridgefield Public Schools because of the level of support I heard they offered all of their staff. That level of support has greatly exceeded all of my expectations.
I'm so happy I made the move to teach in Ridgefield Public Schools because of all the collaboration that I've got to experience with my colleagues and administration, and all the wonderful support I've been given this first year.
The Ridgefield Public Schools have amazing staff to help us out, amazing coaches, administration. I feel so supportive and always go and ask questions, and it's okay to ask questions because that's what they're there for.
My team members are so collaborative, they're so helpful, and I have the autonomy of the classroom to work with the students in a very productive but fun way, and it's always a dynamic experience. It's fantastic working here at Ridgefield, and I couldn't ask for anything better.
And this is my 10th year here in Ridgefield. I choose to stay because of the growth opportunities, not only for students, but for teachers, too. For me, I've joined committees, I have engaged in professional development, and just jumped in on special projects across the district over the years, and all of these experiences helped make me a stronger teacher and leader.
Ridgefield Public Schools is my district of choice because they support our arts programs in our schools, especially providing equitable access for all students across the district to the arts.
One of the primary reasons why I left being a principal elsewhere to come back here is because I wanted to work in an environment where young teachers are encouraged to seek leadership opportunities, and they're brought along in those instances, and secondarily, where I think that teachers have the great autonomy to really make the curriculum come alive.
Ridgefield's my district of choice because of the people, between the students, the staff, and the parent community. It's just such a great town of people who have all kinds of varied interests and support education.
Ridgefield is a district of choice because we are a learning community. Our teachers are always excited to learn new things, share them with our students. Our students are excited to learn, and it's a great place to be.
And why I love working at Ridgefield is because of the wonderful teaching staff that we have. My colleagues inspire me every day, the wonderful things they are doing in their classrooms. I always feel supported by them. I love coming to work and spending time with them. I can't actually imagine not being here.
My name is Lisa Whalen. I'm a kindergarten teacher at Barlow Mountain Elementary School. I've been teaching in Ridgefield since 1986, and I'm thrilled... I've been teaching in Ridgefield since 1986, and I'm thrilled to be teaching here and being part of the community of Ridgefield. My children grew up here, and I continue to love and cherish working in this district.
Thank you to Mrs. Pratt for putting that video together. And I think really, ending with the voices of our teachers and administrators couldn't be more powerful. That said, we turn it to the Board of Education for their questions.
Thank you so much for that presentation. Questions? Christine, and then Sean.
Thank you so much for this, and thank you for all that you do to support your teachers. I'm like grinning from ear to ear. I have, I'm so incredibly grateful for all of the teachers here. I've met some amazing ones, and, you know, just listening makes me wish that I had applied here. You know, I have a few questions, and first, I just wanted to say some things that stuck out for me as a former teacher, you know, just that the teachers noticed that Suzie, Cory, and Liz are in the classroom. You know, I just want the community to know that that's not really, that doesn't happen everywhere. I mean, especially the superintendent. So I just want to thank you for that. I know how busy your day is, and I know it means the world to the teachers and the kids.
And to me.
And to you. Well, right, you know, like, that's the best part, right? You can walk into the classroom. So thank you. And, you know, just the fact that they noted that means that you're there, that you're in the trenches, and that's not common. So thank you. The fact that you are supportive administration, that allows your teachers to take risks, to feel comfortable enough to come to you with suggestions, but also to take risks in the classroom and know that they're supported, that's really everything. And what that does is it creates an environment in the classroom where children feel that they can take risks, and that, there's nothing more important than that. So thank you for that. The, I had a question about, oh, I love the PD, how it's relevant. I mean, it's just amazing, especially for special ed, that it's relevant and connected to gen ed. I can't tell you, as a former special educator, how many times we would repeat that mantra, you know? And so just to know that you're really listening to your educators, it just makes the world of difference. That was really going to be my question, do you get teacher input when you're planning PD for them?
Cory can speak to the feedback forms that teachers receive after each and every professional learning session, but I just want to take a moment to talk about the value of special education staff and the partnership with gen ed content. Because the reality is, is that they're coming out, and it's out of school, right? And the content knowledge can be pretty wide for them. So you can, you could be a special education teacher and be teaching third, fourth, fifth grade one year, K-1, 2, let's say, another year, and when you think about all of the content that's associated with that, whereas, not to mention understanding learning styles and all the varying disabilities that we navigate in the journey of a child, not to mention then, learning all the specific content connected to those grade levels. It's not one small task, and we recognize that. And as much as we really prioritize that as an important aspect of our responsibility to our teachers, it's incredibly challenging. So we're grateful that they're giving us the time and energy, even outside of the traditional school year, to learn that content.
Cory, why don't you talk about the feedback forms?
So for all our professional learning, we ask our teachers for feedback, and they get forms for the short and the long, specifically around special education. One of the things that we've been able to do the last two school years that Dr. DeSilva was referencing was we offer summer academy. Because as a special educator, there's many layers that you need to learn and be refreshed on. They recently had a new tech platform that they had to navigate, which took them away from staying up along their colleagues, their general education colleagues. So we offered summer academy so that they could not only go in the summer and receive additional learning, be compensated for it, and the learning that they received during that time was based on feedback from the teachers. Which would you like, which did you feel like you needed more of? And we're going to, we're able to continue to offer that this summer, and it's not just to special educators this year, it's going to be to a diverse group of teachers at the middle school and at the elementary level.
Excellent, thank you. Yeah, I mean, making PD relevant for teachers is very important because when they're, especially when they're pulled out of their classroom, but I love that you're doing the summer academy, but it's difficult when you're pulled out of the classroom, and that, so it has, you know, it needs to be relevant, and it sounds like it is, and you take their input into consideration, so thank you. Do you have, and you mentioned this briefly, do you have mentors for new teachers, like a mentoring program?
Yes, Karen, do you want to talk about the TEAM program and what happens thereafter?
Sure. So in the state of Connecticut, TEAM is the Teacher Education and Mentoring Program. It's for new beginning teachers that have the initial certification level, and it's mainly for your classroom teachers. So say a school psychologist or a school counselor does not belong to TEAM, but it's a two-year program in which they have five modules to complete, and so they have that same mentor for two years. Outside of the formal TEAM mentoring program, part of our diverse workforce advisory committee is our goal to connect any new teacher to a mentor. So we have done that informally, and that's another area that we hope to increase because we really want to make sure that whether or not you're in this formal program, you have the resources that you need when you get here.
Now, that's excellent, because I know it can be overwhelming for a new teacher, so having that mentor is excellent.
We've created a similar model for our administrators, and so each, even though it's not required in the similar way that it's required for teachers, we did create a similar model, I think just about three years ago, am I right, Karen?
Uh, we're here too, I believe.
Yep.
Excellent, thank you. It's, I mean, it's just such a wonderful place, so thank you. It's a privilege to sit here, thank you.
Sean?
Not so much a question, I wanted to kind of go on the Wayback Machine because we've come a long way in four years. You know, when I joined the board, my first order of business was interviews for a new superintendent, because we had been through five in the previous four years, and some people at the board table didn't live that history the way that some of us did. And remember, the first year and a half of those four years were COVID, where we couldn't enter buildings and stuff, so we really only had two and a half years to see this progress. And it's remarkable, we've rebuilt curriculum, we've got a strong program that's attracting people, we weren't there four years ago. So, you know, we've allowed you to take some risks, and you've allowed your staff to take some risks, and the reason we do is because they pan out most of the time. So we appreciate that, and I'll not speak for the board, but speak for the board, good job.
Thank you. Amy?
Thank you for this, and I just wanted to say, you know, when we go to the New Teacher Day and the convocation in August, you get that feel from teachers that they truly love being here, and that's infectious. I just wanted to say that last week, as a parent, I just happened to be speaking to some of the greatest teachers here at RPS, and we were talking about why they stay, why they don't go somewhere else, and they were telling me that it was professional development. Hands down, they said that it's just so great here in Ridgefield. And I think it's interesting because it's interesting that those are the people that we're attracting, but it's, the teachers I was speaking to, I'm so impressed with them, and those are the kind of people that are willing to grow, they want to grow, they have an open mind. They've been teachers for decades, and they've taught a certain way, they've done certain things, and they're not stuck in that. You know, when evidence-based research comes along and new things come along, they're willing to try it, they're willing to take those risks, and those are the kind of teachers that I want for my kids and all the kids in our community. So thank you for that. And, random question. I'm wondering, during the interview process, when the teachers have to teach a lesson plan or perform a task, is that something they create on their own, or is it something that you give them and say, okay, teach this?
So a little bit of both. We identify the student population that they're going to be serving, we give them the grade level, and then ultimately, they're to design the lesson based on the information that we provide. As Karen shared, even in the summer months, we will welcome students back. Sometimes, you know, 10th-grade students have to pretend to be 8th-grade students because that's all we can find. I'll tell you a funny story about that in just a minute. But we do have students in which they, you know, that are accessible to them. And then part of that process is really to gain feedback from the teacher to say, you know, it might be, what didn't we tell you that you needed to know based on the population that we gave you? What did you wish you knew that would have helped? How did it go, right? What did, what would you have done differently next time? And that, that gives us more insight sometimes than the lesson itself. So it's just an interesting piece of information that we get for the, from the teacher in terms of their ability to reflect and gauge what, what assessment information they ultimately needed that they may have not received. In no way is it a trick opportunity for them, but, but understanding what their perspective is of the experience is equally important. The funny story is that I was part of a similar model in another district, and I was sure that one of the students was not an actual student and yet an adult. And I was stubborn and kept saying that, and no one would really fess up that this person looked like an adult. Fast forward to my first year here in Ridgefield, when that child came for an interview, and I ultimately hired, and I'm like, wait a minute, I know you, you were the kid, but you're not a kid. So yes, it's important that we have kids in front of teachers, and every teacher, or psychologist, or any individual that comes into a role here has kids in front of them before they, we take them on.
I mean, anecdotally, anecdotally, I know that children get very excited when they're part of that summer programs. I mean, as they grow up, they may change, but I, I've had a child who's been very excited to be called back for the teachers, and I know you take teacher, you take, ask the kids also how they felt after the class.
That's correct.
I think that's a very important piece I want to highlight. No matter what grade they are, you will collect the kids and you'll ask them, how did, did you get it? And I've, I know it's happened for language teachers, it happened for gen ed.
So yes, we do solicit feedback from the students on how it felt to be in that particular teacher's classroom or meeting or whatever it was.
That was, it's something Liz said and Amy said, I just wanted to up till, unless somebody else has questions, so I can wait. You sure? Okay, just, Liz, you mentioned very quickly about teacher shortages in special ed, right? I know, but this is a conversation that we've had and we've heard about teacher shortages. This is happening, and this is a, this is a topic of concern, and I've heard it at multiple level, at different meetings. What are the steps that you're taking to address those teacher shortages? And then after we've heard that, my next question will be, what is our continued growth? You know, we're here, and I know Amy said this too, I believe a superintendent once said, just like medicine, it's, like, doctors continue to need to grow, like, and this is the same, what Amy just said, teachers also need to, it's, you need to continue to learn and grow. And so what are the next steps you're taking to encourage that growth mindset, which we've referenced multiple times?
Do you want to talk about the shortages, or Karen?
Yeah.
Karen, why don't you start?
Sure, I'll start. So we have a couple of things that we are talking about through, it's primarily through our diverse workforce advisory committee, but it's for any educator, in that where can we make stronger connections to entice the educators that are coming out of programs to want to come here for our new hire, you know, for somebody that's right out of school? Because we know that the pool is limited. People are not going into education, so they're not coming out of prep programs. So last year, a small committee and myself, we interviewed the heads of Sacred Heart, Fairfield, and different local institutions. I recently just said, okay, where are we getting our student teachers from? And ironically, I was shocked, it was limited from Fairfield and Sacred Heart. And so one of the things that we have a goal for next year is re-establishing or strengthening those relationships. So having people from those prep programs come into our buildings, come into our classrooms, having our committees or people from our committee or administrators going to the schools, talking to programs so that really reconnect, so that they, you know, have an image of Ridgefield and come here when you graduate. So that's one thing that is on our radar. Two is we are continuing to look at non-traditional avenues in how we get non-certified people into the profession, if we believe that they have the interest and the talent. So that's still a budgetary issue, but something that we want to continue to examine because just frankly, there, there's a shortage, and we have to look at alternative ways to get people into the profession. So those are two.
Thank you, Karen.
I can just add, in addition to what Karen's talking about, so one thing that, at least I'll say, for, for in our department, because everything within special services, whether it be speech and language, school psychologists, special education teachers, it's a shortage area, is that Tony and I are trying to make ourselves visible locally, right? So that you get like conferences, you know, local organizations and meetings, we're trying to, a lot of mixed people go to these things. And so we have had a bunch of applicants who have been like, oh, I met you at blank, or I didn't meet you, I met your colleague, or, you know, so we're trying to, to make sure that we're present in the conversations for, you know, people within special education, and just have a larger presence so that Ridgefield is known, and we're trying to bring staff to those as well. Because we're, we're, like everybody else, fighting for a very small pool of new candidates coming out. Where we're having more success is, as Karen talked about, our staff actually also recruiting. We're having a lot of success with our staff. They have friends or they have family members who are either moving to town, looking to come out of private school, looking for a change in their district, or looking for a different type of situation, and they say, oh, you know, so-and-so referred me, so-and-so referred me. So that, that really is a strategy of ours right now, because as Karen said, the pool is, the pool is small.
Just one other piece, I think when we look at that strategy in, in local communities, obviously, we're not here to steal people from other districts. And to that point, when someone's looking for a change, they oftentimes are looking for a similar district, and perhaps it's one of those elements of investment that we believe in, whether it's professional development, as Cory shared, a culture and climate, one where people can take risks as educators. Those are important elements in a community, and certainly, I think, to also Cory's point about budget, when, when a educator is looking for a position and knows that there's continuity and support of a budget, they're quicker to make the change, right? They're not going to make a change where they're hearing that blank number of dollars are being cut from their budget, because the reality is, they don't know, they might get a job this year, but then next year, am I going to be the one on the chopping block when there's cuts? So that stability and continuity is incredibly important in that recruitment phase when people are coming from like districts. And as Karen also shared, these communities are small. I mean, you ask me, I could probably tell you, most of the people in the, the communities within our DURG, because they're small, there's back and forth in many cases, sometimes our folks even leaving to go to those districts. So I think that that's an important element. Your second question, which is around growth for our teachers, in addition to the professional development that Cory shared, which oftentimes is very focused on the district priorities, right? So we're not studying other phonics programs when we've just invested our time and energy and foundation, so we're not sending people out to go see ABC program, because this is where we've invested similarly with mathematics and, and other pieces. But when you have teachers that are at a different stage in their career, this is when you want to say, hey, is there something that you personally need to grow? Maybe you're ready to innovate around technology and you're super interested in AI. Well, let's see if there's an ISTI conference that you can go to, or another, another type of professional opportunity.
Or if you're a teacher leader, leading a department, and you're writing curriculum, if we see that there's an ISTI conference that has relevant opportunities and workshops.
Curriculum develops, development is a great opportunity for teachers that are ready to take the next step and perhaps lead in their grade level, right? Be a part of that type of team. Maybe not ready for a leadership, leadership role, but this is, you know, a leadership role, or leading professional development, which is a big part of the way that we treat professional development, is many of times, our teachers are running sessions because they're such a valued member of our community, and we want our teachers to see their colleagues as partners, and of course, the natural ownership that comes with that.
And I just want to add on that part of keeping it a learning community is modeling learning ourselves and having our administrators modeling that learning, growing, and, you know, you've watched me, and all of us, we, we learn and we grow every day, we get better, we reflect, we grow. We are in partnership in our, with our teachers. We are in partnership in our, with our teachers as we do the same work. Karen and I have spent a tremendous amount of time, as you'll see in four weeks, growing next to our teachers as we've rewritten teacher evaluation and administrator evaluation plans. So we, we grow in front of our teachers and we show that growth mindset ourselves as a way to honor our teachers' risk-taking. We want them to try, we want them to ask those questions, we want their insights. Because again, they're sitting in different seats than we are.
Similar to the feedback that we collect from our teachers, we also provide our administrators a leadership survey at the end of the, the year, so they can, bless you, so that they can give us feedback on how we can be better in terms of our support and/or our growth for, for them as a collective group. Because that's the reality, is we can't be better without knowing what it is that we need to do better. And that's a, I would say, probably the, the biggest leverage tool that we have as a leadership group is the ebb and flow in saying, you know what, I could have probably done that better. This wasn't, this wasn't really the best approach. Because we want them to take as many risks as our teachers do, and we want them to see us being willing to say, yeah, that was a bad idea. Let's try something else.
Wyatt?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. A couple of follow-up questions from Ms. Monchultra, question about the shortage in this commerce, this discussion. For those candidates to whom we make an offer and they may be misguided and elect to go elsewhere, do we get any feedback from those folks or any data on what choice they've made if they, if they do elect to go to a different district and why they made that decision?
Yeah. Want me to take it, Karen?
Sure.
Sure, it's typically financial. So it's either financial in two ways. So if, because we border New York, we'll receive teachers that have applied through a program we call OLS, which it draws New York candidates. And sometimes, what looks like it matches up on paper, when they realize the retirement package that they have, it doesn't work. And so that is a typical scenario, that we have them right to the end. And I think you heard one of our teachers say it, we make sure that they know that we really want them here and that they're the best, because they've gone through everything and we want them here. And sometimes it's just not good enough because of that, that variable that's connected to the retirement plan. Second, it could be financial. It could be that, you know what, I live closer to X district and they're going to pay me blank amount of dollars more, so it makes more sense. Sometimes you'll hear them say, I took the ride during the demo lesson and I, it was really, I had a lot of traffic, so I tried it again and I hit the same kind of traffic. So sometimes the commute could be a variable. The other reason is sometimes they can't, they simply can't afford to live in the, in the area. And this is one of those climates where it's not so easy to pick up an apartment, let's say, in the, in the city next door, or the town next door, because there aren't as many available. So those are typically the, the reasons. I would say the vast majority of the time, by the time they get to our level and interview with us, and my principals can tell you, as they tell their teachers, it's a, it's a real interview. It's not just a rubber stamp. By that time, most of them, the majority of them, take the offer. Now, sometimes they're between two school districts and they want it to wait, they want us to wait it out. I have one more interview with such and such district and I want to hear what that offer is. And sometimes we just say, we can't wait. And so therefore, they move on. Because we may have somebody also that we, we don't want to hold on to. Karen, is there anything I missed?
No, no, I think that was accurate. When Susie does offer the position and then I stay on to talk to them, I always say, did you go to her website and look at her teacher salary schedule? Because I wanted to know, do you know, like, have you done your research so that you'll understand where you fall? And I want to say 99.9% of the time, they have. So they, they know what they're coming into.
Yeah. There's rare occasions where they might want to coach and if they're taking, you know, an elementary position, it just doesn't work, things like that. But I would say that the vast majority of the people, which is rare, like I said at the end, for those reasons.
So just to confirm, is it an, is it a regular practice if a candidate chooses not to take the offer, to ask them explicitly?
Oh, yeah.
Where they're going and what, what their thinking was?
So we don't typically ask where they're going because, unless they tell us. Most of the time, though, if they're going somewhere else, they'll say it. You know, sometimes it's little incentives that they might have to have gone on to another district, right? So we have a contract that says you're coming in at step A, you know, in this particular column. And because this is a shortage area, maybe in another community, they might say, well, we can bring you in a, in a, at a higher step. And we just can't because we don't need it in the same kind of way. But they are, to be fair, they are pretty honest about why they don't take a, a position.
Yeah, I mean professionally, I can't think of a situation where someone has declined and I've had to chase them down for, for the reason why. Usually they come back, not even just through Karen, but I don't know, it's through you or the principal, or through our office, that they'll contact us directly. I think it's just a norm, professional courtesy.
One last reason that actually is, is common, is they decided actually not to leave their place.
I was going to mention that.
Because all of a sudden, the principal or whomever learned that they were leaving and begged them to stay. And so that's actually another common variable.
Can I just say one other thing, which is just very, very relevant? If it's not a full-time position, if it's a .7, those are super, super hard to staff.
Right.
So, you know, we think we have an Italian teacher who can do a .6, and then all of a sudden, they get offered a full-time job in another place. So that is, that is a really hard area. And they like us and they want them, but you can't blame somebody for not taking a full-time job. So, so that is, that's a tricky one. That's less, more about the position, I think less about us.
Thanks. Can someone speak more to what the diverse workforce advisory committee is doing? What are their activities? And Ms. Duing mentioned that they were undertaking non-traditional ways of recruiting candidates. Can you give a little more detail on that? What does that look like?
Back in February 12th, we did present our plan. I know that some of you were not on the board when we had our committee here to present our work. But through initiatives by the legislative for the state of Connecticut, we're required to have a plan to talk about how we will recruit, hire, select, and retain to increase educator diversity in Connecticut schools. So we do have that plan in place. We have short-term and long-term goals that we're addressing in all three of those domains. So you can certainly look at our plan. We actually just had a committee meeting on April 24th of last week, where we went through our progress towards meeting those short-term goals and talking about our work, continued work for next year. What was the other part of your question, Wyatt? I'm sorry?
The non-traditional ways of recruiting candidates.
Yeah, so that's the, that's the tricky one. So like, where can we post? So one example is community centers. So over the last spring, this spring, and even last year, I've been leaving messages and trying to reach out to the Portuguese Center in Danbury, other community centers in Danbury. Norwalk Community College has a satellite in Danbury. Do you have a posting that I can, you know, is there a place there? So non-educational recruitment sites, non, you know, Indeed or Monster.com, but really non-traditional. Like where do you have a bulletin board where we can let people know, who may not be looking for the Ridgefield Public Schools, that we have job opportunities? And that's for educators, but it's also for all of our positions, our SSOs, our van drivers, our paraeducators. So those are the types of things that we're trying to explore. And I haven't quite been successful yet, but I haven't given up.
For those of you that need a reminder, the committee, along with Esther Bodwick, was here when the fire alarm went off, when we were all outside.
April 24th.
Yes.
Last year, right?
Yes, yes. And we just recently had to resubmit our plan to the state, which I believe it was this board that approved.
It's also on the website.
Yes.
On the hiring page.
Just one last question. On, on retention, do we have measurement tools around retention? And how do we track how we're doing on that piece?
So we do, in terms, we look at our resignations. And so we identify, and I could say, generally speaking, over the past five years, on the high end, we've had about, I think it was like somewhere between 16 and 17 teachers who have left to go to other places. Sometimes it's other places, sometimes it's staying home with my children, sometimes it's following the boyfriend, girlfriend, the whomever. Sometimes it's, you know, I, I've just chosen perhaps a new career, which is, is rare, but that happens on occasion. So on the high end, somewhere around 17. On the low end, over the past five years, we've had about 12. And then that's separate from retirees.
And how does that track against comparable districts or other districts in the DURG?
We haven't, we haven't tracked that, not that I'm aware of, Karen. I don't know if you have, but certainly we could look at that information if it's helpful for the board to see if we're seeing a difference in our retention than other communities. I don't, from what I've experienced, I think our numbers seem about right, but we can find that information out. No problem.
Selena and then Tom.
What's the, and you don't need, it doesn't need to be exact, Karen. Do you know the average length of time that people stay here? Because it seems like they do stay here a long time. I mean, I've, Jim Tornatori, he's been here forever. And Deb Cologne. So I'm just curious, like, do you just have an average? And then you don't, I mean, it doesn't, just an average?
Yeah, I, I don't have an average. We have over 450 teachers. So I do know that, you know, people come, and when we talk about 13, 17 out of 450 a year, it's a small percentage of our turnover each year. And people do stay. But I don't, it's a wide range. I can say, just anecdotally, that we have a, I want to use the word younger, our veteran staff, we have less people near retirement than we used to. So I've now, this is my 20th year as Director Personnel. We used to have significant, what we called turnover savings, which is the amount of money from a retired person compared to a new hire. And people were retiring just naturally. That has decreased year after year because we have less people near retirement or closer to retirement. But that was a positive thing at the time, meaning just generational. But no, I don't have the average number of years.
If there's a way to, that would be a good tool to use to attract new teachers. So I used to have an IT computer company and that is.
It's one thing that we used to advertise, of course. You know, it wasn't, I, we didn't have as many employees, right? We had 20. So it was much easier. But people like to see that people stay.
And I think generally. Generally speaking, our retention numbers appear, again, to Wyatt's question, is this similar or dissimilar? They, they appear to be very good, based on what I've experienced. That said, sometimes it is a little bit unique in that you might have a teacher, for example, not retire from here because they're looking for a leadership opportunity that we just, at this moment in time, don't have. And so they might be venturing out because it's offered somewhere else. We had somebody just recently go somewhere else because we didn't have an opportunity. We'd love to have that person back if they're listening at some point. But that is a reality, right? People want to grow and they want different opportunities, and sometimes they're just not available at the time in which they would like it.
Tom?
Thank you. I just had one question and one comment. Question, I seem to recall many years ago, a lawyer colleague of mine who lived in town decided he didn't want to be a lawyer anymore. So he did something called the Alternative Route to Certification. I think it was in Hartford.
Yes.
And he's been a teacher now forever, in a different, in a different community. Is that still a thing where you can find teachers?
Yes. So you're right, it is called the Alternative. Yes, you are right. It is called the Alternative Route to Certification. They have two different programs. So it's meant for people that have already an established career in another field. So you could be an attorney, maybe you were a chemist for 20 years, and now you want to be a chemistry teacher. Or you are native, you know, Spanish speaker and now you want to teach, but you've not gone through a traditional educational teacher prep program. And so they do have a kind of a really condensed summer program, where you'll take classes and then do some internships. And then you're hired by a district for a year under, it's called like a 90-day certification, where it's a temporary certification, where you kind of do your student teaching while you're working for us. And then they do have a, like a school year program that's on the weekends. So yes, they are trying to gap the shortage, you know, certification process with this. And we have hired a couple of teachers through that program throughout the years. Yes, we do. Oh, yes, we do.
Yes. We have a Spanish teacher that we recently hired from there too, at the high school.
And then the, the comment, the comment I wanted to say is this, and I think I feel comfortable saying this because I'm probably the oldest one on this board, at least been in town so long. To me, the, one of the best ways to hire and retain really good teachers is to have a really good leadership team that creates a culture that makes people want to come here and stay here. And, you know, for those parents who might be new to town, or they have children that are really young and haven't yet gone into the school system, that, to point out that we've got it really good here in this town, and we've got a really special leadership team. Now, we're always going to agree on everything, I get that, but that we, we as a board should continue to trust and support this team in fulfilling the mission of the district because that's an important element in creating the culture, keeping the team here to hire and retain good teachers. So that was my comment.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Any other comments, questions? All right. Thank you so much, and thank you for all the work that you do.
Thank you.
Moving on to the next item on our agenda, healthy food certification. Should we do a motion a second and then we can talk about it?
Yeah, it'll be tangled up anyway, so it doesn't matter which order you go in.
Okay, let's, why don't we present and then we'll do the motion?
Okay.
Okay.
So, good evening, everyone. If I can just take a quick minute just to give the new board members and seasoned board members as well, some insight on this and why we do this, I think that'd be helpful. So every year, we're required to address the motion of whether or not we're going to participate with healthy foods. So in our district, we actually run two different programs simultaneously, right? Our, all of our elementary schools and middle schools participate in and are part of the National School Lunch Program. And we follow all of the rules for healthy food certification in grades K through 8. And because we do that, we get federal reimbursement, well, state, federal to state reimbursement for all of our free and reduced lunch students for meals in their respective schools. At the high school level, we have chosen not to be part of the National School Lunch Program because it gives us greater flexibility. When you're part of that program, there are very stringent rules that you must follow. Four, components of what makes a meal, different types of vegetables, whether they're oranges or leafy greens, or legumes, or how many times you have to offer during the course of a week, and also portion size. Not being part of that program at the high school level allows us greater flexibility, allows us to serve, like in the pasta bar that we have, for what we serve, kids would have to buy multiple meals to equal the portions that we allow them to have. To give you an idea, we just had our quarterly meeting with our food service management company, Aramark, last week. And comparing this year, year-to-date, to last year, we have served more than 50,000 meals more year-to-date than we did last year. So students are really liking the food that they serve and they're participating with the lunch program. That's K through 12. That's the best news ever, because when kids are eating well, they're performing well and they're healthy and all of that. So the revenue that we receive together with our food service management company in that high school service program allows us to turn around and subsidize the free and reduced lunch at the high school. And at the end of the year, we're still better off. So we see it as a win-win-win. So traditionally, this district has chosen not to elect to participate in the Healthy Food Certification because it gives us the flexibility in the high school program, but we still participate in the program K through 8. I hope that's helpful. Part of the stringent nature of this program is when you make this motion, it has to be word-for-word, the language has to be exact. Because it's written in the memo, if you want to waive the reading of it, you're free to do that. But the minutes need to reflect the exact language that's in this motion. I hope that's helpful. If you have any questions, happy to do my best to answer.
Any questions? Yeah, well, yeah, the pressure's on, John. Go for it.
I move that pursuant to CGS Section 10-215F, the Ridgefield Board of Education. the Ridgefield Board of Education certifies that all food items offered for sale to students in the schools under its jurisdiction and not exempted from the Connecticut Nutrition Standards published by the Connecticut State Department of Education will comply with the Connecticut Nutrition Standards during the period of July 1st, 2024, through June 30th, 2025. This certification shall include all food offered for sale to students separately from reimbursable meals at all times and from all sources, including but not limited to school stores, vending machines, school cafeterias, culinary programs, and any fundraising activities on school premises sponsored by the school or non-school organizations and groups.
Thank you. John, do we have a second? Sean. Any other questions, comments? Okay, all those in favor of approving the recommendation? Please raise your hand. Eight, motion carries. Thank you. Right. Sorry, Cheryl?
I'm sorry, is that done correctly? If this is approved, then you have to read number two.
So there's- So let's clarify. Are you approving the recommendation to continue not participating in the Healthy Food Certification?
Well, one was participation in Healthy Food Action.
So, so for number one, if we want to continue like we've been doing, you would need to vote no to number one, which will offer us the flexibility at the high school. So my recommendation for this is that you vote no to number one, and then there's no reason to vote yes to number two. We don't, we don't have to vote at all for number two.
I'm sorry, I don't see a number one or number two in the board-
Oh, in the memo, I'm sorry. In your memo is one and two.
Okay, that's where we, we went to the motions.
I voted yes to follow the recommendation. So maybe that, that's what I meant to do.
We got it wrong because I just saw the- It says recommendations. It says recommendations. There are no two, the second motion is not there, and that's why.
I see. So to this motion, we have, you want to vote that?
Okay, so here. You have it? Okay.
So, sorry for the confusion. It's because, yeah, there are two motions, and it was in the memo, not in the-
Just that we thought we had it without confusion.
So first, we have to rescind the vote. Everyone, everyone? Can I please call to order, please? Please. We're still live, and this is still a meeting. Can, Cheryl, do we have to rescind this motion first? Okay, so first, can we have a motion to rescind the motion as read by Mr. Parody?
I move to rescind the motion.
I second. All those in favor of rescinding the motion? Motion rescinded. Okay, there are two votes, and this is in the memo. For anyone who is following us along, it's not in the suggested motion. So that is where the confusion happened. So, John, can you read the first?
I move that pursuant to CGS Section 10-215F, the Ridgefield Board of Education certifies that all food items offered for sale to students in the schools under its jurisdiction and not exempted from Connecticut, from the Connecticut Nutrition Standards published by the Connecticut Department, State Department of Education will comply with the Connecticut Nutrition Standards during the period of July 1st, 2024, through June 30th, 2025. This certification shall include all food offered for sale to students separately from reimbursable meals at all times and from all sources, including but not limited to school stores, vending machines, school cafeterias, culinary programs, and any fundraising activities on school premises sponsored by the school or non-school organizations and groups.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Sean, anyone who wants to, yes, no, what, first we'll ask for what? Anybody in favor of approving this recommendation? Anyone? Does the board, would like the board, all those who are against this motion, please raise your hand. Eight, the board votes no. Because the board has voted no, we do not need to go to vote two.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to policies and bylaw first read.
Thank you. We have four policies before the board for first read. The first two policies are recommended by the committee to be rescinded from our policy book. And I'd just like to note that part of the obligation of the board and the policy committee is to maintain a group of policies that remain pertinent and responsive to the needs of our professional staff and leadership team. And that means continuously auditing what's in our book and culling those policies that are no longer relevant or useful. Not just adding new policies or updating policies, but sometimes actually eliminating policies. So there, there are two policies we can address together. 6142 on classroom instruction, 6146 dot two on standardized testing. These policies were implemented 50 years ago. They've not been revised in 24 years. When we evaluated them in collaboration with the cabinet, there was consensus that these are policies that really are self-evident in what they express with respect to classroom instruction and standardized testing. They don't document anything that the team or the committee felt added value to the way that our buildings operate today. And for that reason, we are recommending that this committee, that this, sorry, that this board vote to rescind each of those policies from, from our policy book going forward. I don't think I'm going to read those policies. I would ask that folks read them, and we will have a second read at the next session to vote on that. Any questions or discussion?
Sean?
Yeah, question on the, on the second one, on testing. It lays out in paragraph one that we have a system of testing that we're going to have parents be informed of the CMT results. Is that stuff memorialized in any other policies?
Yeah, really good question. And that was something we talked a lot about at the policy committee meeting. And we understand that we have statutory obligations and our, our obligations for reporting and communicating with parents are memorialized elsewhere. So this was, this is a redundant, redundant language.
Which policy, is that what you opened?
Yeah, so the, the legal reference on that policy, Connecticut General Statute, Section 1076D8, includes those obligations.
That's a Connecticut statute, that's not our bylaws or policy.
We have no other, we have no, yeah, we have no bylaw, other bylaws or board documentation that obligates us to do that. We have, we may have-
I get it, but we're taking one away, and now we don't have one. And if a superintendent chooses not to share the results with us of testing, there's no policy that says they have.
They'd be in violation of the law.
So this was not a policy that was recommended by Shipman. This was one of those policies back around my birthday that was created lightly at that time because there wasn't an obligation. In fact, just to start here, that we don't even, we don't even have the CMT anymore. So we have the ESBAK.
Correct.
What happens now is the State Department of Ed actually sends us our student test scores, which gets sent to our families. So that is the obligation, the legal reference that Mr. Lippman speaks to. So rather than having a policy that reflects the day-to-day practice, not just of this test, but other types of tests that our, that our parents receive or data that our parents receive, we felt that the policy wasn't appropriate to be there. And we go through, and more problematic. And then it doesn't include all of the other pieces of data that parents get informed of. So it just really identifies that one, Sean, that we felt like it just wasn't necessary. So that was our recommendation to rescind. And if you don't mind, for the second one, classroom instruction, I think anyone that's a teacher knows that that's just what you do. And so it didn't feel like that had to be memorialized specifically in a policy. And I think something that Mr. Collin brought up at one point, sometimes when you have a policy like this that includes some things and not other things, it feels like it shouldn't really be there because there's a lot more that could be added here. And it would be many pages long.
Christine, you had a question?
I actually, it was, is that on?
Yeah.
It was actually about the testing. I, I, I actually was curious if this policy was drafted before we even started to give state tests to kids. Like when I, you know, when I first started teaching, districts chose their own way to assess kids. And each district had their own, at least in New York, that's how they did it. So I was, that was my thought, that this was, because now that we have state assessments that are required by law.
So probably when it started back in '74, but then all of the revisions, you know, that's made. So like '95 was the last revision, which reflects CMT. We've had ESBAK. It's got to be at least 10, I think even maybe more years. So rather than having this race to be sure that we're updating policies that may or may not reflect the name of a particular assessment, it's, doesn't need to be here. And again, as Mr. Lippman shared, it's a legal obligation to inform parents, and they give us the test results, so we send them home.
Right, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, this will come back to the board for a second read and a possible vote.
Thank you. The next policy is 6145 dot three, Student Publications. This is an existing policy. If you look at the existing policy on page 17 of the packet, it is two sentences long. It's not particularly useful in its current form. We debated whether to also recommend this policy to be rescinded. And after consultation with the cabinet and with Dr. Greenwood in particular, actually decided that instead expanding the policy to track the model policy that CAEBO offers was the wiser course of action. We heard from Dr. Greenwood that the expanded and more detailed policy, which I will read, provides helpful guidance for the operation of our student publications. It reflects the fact that we are committed to the importance of student publications as part of our pedagogy in our schools. And it also just reflects the best practices in current state of play for rules of responsible journalism. So that policy now would read, "Student publications are important elements of the instructional program and contribute directly to the accomplishment of a school's goals. The Board of Education encourages the development of school student publications, such as newspapers, annuals, and magazines because they offer an educational activity through which students gain experience in reporting, writing, editing, and understanding responsible journalism. Such publications also provide an opportunity for students to express their views and a means of communicating both within and beyond the school community. All student publications will comply with the rules of responsible journalism. Libelous statements, unfounded charges and accusations, obscenity, false statements, materials advocating racial or religious prejudice, hatred, violence, the breaking of laws and school policies and/or regulations, or materials designed to disrupt the educational process will not be permitted. Expressions of personal opinion must be clearly identified as such and bear the name of the author. Opportunity for the expression of opinions differing from those of the student publishers must be provided. In addition, student newspapers and/or publications which are paid for by the district and/or produced under the direction of a teacher as part of the school curriculum are not considered a public forum. In such cases, the board reserves the right to edit or delete such student speech that is determined to be inconsistent with the district's basic educational mission. The administration will develop regulations to provide guidance on student publication oversight and procedures."
Are there any questions for Mr. Lipp?
So when I read that, I hear it is being very oriented towards print publication of newspaper, magazines, and similar products. Is, is there a concern that as time advances and perhaps the student body moves more to online publishing in some way, that this would limit our ability to maintain the same policy restrictions around that content?
I'm not sure, I, I'm not sure that I, that I necessarily see how it's, how the language limits the publications to print versus digital? Is there, is there verbiage that you're concerned about in particular?
Yeah, just the elucidation of examples, newspaper, magazines, and newsletters, I think it was. Seems it's very oriented towards like the tangible object that might be available in the, in the lobby or something. And yeah, it doesn't seem like it's digital-friendly. And I would just be concerned that if, you know, I wouldn't want there to be some misunderstanding that if some way this school is paying for some sort of blogging type of activity in the future, that that's in some way not also required to follow these requirements.
Yeah, point taken. Have no issue with including a clarification that includes digital formats. I think most newspapers these days don't, don't exist in paper form. So when I see newspapers, I think about nyt.com and wallstreetjournal.com. But, but in any event, yes, perfectly happy to make that clarification for the sake of leaving no doubt about that point. Thank you.
That's a good point, John. Any other questions? All right, so this will come back with the added suggestion by Mr. Parody, so. Thank you. All right, moving on to the board bylaw, 9327.1, Use of Internet, Social Networks. I know that I've mentioned this before. I think this is something we brought up a year ago too. And I think as a board, we do, we, we should be role models to our community and our parents. And so I think this is an important bylaw to talk about. So even though it's a board bylaw, I did suggest it to the policy committee. And Mr. Lippman?
Thank you. As the chair mentioned, she did encourage the policy committee to deliberate about this bylaw, Use of Internet, Social Networks. It is modeled after a policy that exists in, in other districts, including Greenwich, which this policy mirrors quite closely, though not word-for-word. I would note that you have a printout in front of you. After our last policy committee meeting, we were able to receive some initial feedback from legal counsel reflecting some further clarification and definitions that would be recommended by counsel to include. So depending on where this discussion goes and how folks feel about the verbiage you now have in front of you in physical form, you, you may say, you may see a modified version of this bylaw proposed for second read. I will, I think it's important, hopefully folks have read this in the packet. I'm not going to read the entire policy. It is quite long. But I think it's important to read the, the top and the bottom of it. So let me do that, and then we can discuss. "The Ridgefield Board of Education recognizes that reliance on social media as a means of communication is rapidly becoming the norm for school districts. Many school board members are active users of social media platforms as well as other online media such as blogs and personal websites. The board understands that social media can be a positive tool for fostering community engagement with the school district. However, board members need to operate with appropriate guidelines when they are communicating online about school district business. While social network sites, networking sites can be an effective and efficient means of communication, board members need to be aware of the obligations and requirements that arise when using this form of communication. Board members' personal use of social networking sites may be limited or prohibited because of the need to comply with the Connecticut statutes pertaining to public records and open meetings as described in the Freedom of Information Act." The next two sections headed compliance with public records law. And then there's a section on maintaining confidentiality, reflect those legal obligations. There's a section on maintaining decorum and periodically reviewing proper decorum in the digital world in a way that reflects our code of ethics. This was an important point of discussion at the committee level that we have a code of ethics that was designed mostly to govern in-person, offline conduct. And we think it's important, as more and more of our interaction and community engagement happens in the digital world, that those same principles that are embodied in the code of ethics are brought over to, to this bylaw. And that's when you get to the final section, Social Media Guidelines for Board Members. "The following guidelines are for board members to consider when using social media in their role as public officials. In using social media to communicate about school district activities, a board member shall clarify the communication is as an individual member of the board and not in the role of an official district spokesperson. Avoid deliberating school district business with a quorum of the board. Direct complaints or concerns presented online from other individuals to the appropriate administrator. Avoid posting content that indicates the reaching of an opinion on pending matters. Ask for community input to be provided through appropriate channels, but will not allow input provided through a social network site to direct decisions as a board member. Post only content that the district has already released to the public. Clarify when attempting to restate what happened at a previous board meeting that the posting on social media site is not an official record of such meeting. Share information only from the open portions of the-" the meeting. Conduct himself/herself online in a manner that reflects well in the district. Avoid posting information that has not been verified and made public by the district, and never post anonymously about school business. Report immediately harassing or defamatory communications to the superintendent if they involve school officials, staff, students, or district business. Retain electronic records, including board members' own posts and content others post to the board member's account when required to do so by the district's retention policy. Report immediately to the district any potential security breaches if the board member loses control or possession of a district-issued or personal electronic device on which confidential district records could be accessed. Comply with the district's acceptable use policy when using district-issued devices or technology resources, including district internet access on a personal device."
White open for questions?
Okay.
All right.
Did this whole policy go through the attorneys?
So, Dr. De Silva, I think I'm going to need you to confirm that. I believe they, I believe they have reviewed it, but because we are, they've reviewed, they've reviewed parallel policies, which are nearly verbatim to this policy. They have not reviewed in total this policy until we have decided to move it forward.
They reviewed the entire code of ethics section?
They've reviewed, again, they've not reviewed the proposed Ridgefield policy in total. They've reviewed the model policies on which it's based, which are essentially...
That's not helpful. What I'm asking specifically is did they look at this policy before you brought it to the board? We've done this before. Before you brought it to the board table, has the lawyer looked at this?
The lawyer has looked at this policy. I don't know whether they've reviewed every word of this policy as it exists in front of you.
They looked at this document?
Dr. De Silva, you brought it to council?
So council has responded in that because the Greenwich in particular is a school district that the council represents. So what would be best practice would be that the board look at the new bylaw that Mr. Lippman has brought forward, along with what Shipman is saying, regardless of what policy we end with, this page here, which is highlighted yellow, and that's supposed to be a blue, but maybe the printer's running low, the yellow and the blue is any policy that the Ridgefield Board of Ed creates. Shipman and Goodwood would recommend that the yellow and the blue be included. Once you all take a look at this proposed policy, then Shipman and Make Your Ad subtracts, connect to which our code of ethics, or, because I don't know that this is ours, but Shipman will look at the policy once it, or the bylaw, excuse me, once it becomes the Ridgefield Board of Ed's bylaw.
Proposed bylaw.
Proposed bylaw, excuse me, and review it for whatever questions, concerns they have. And I think then it would come back, if I'm thinking about the cycle.
Yes.
It would come back to the board, so that you may all look at it again, based on the revisions or recommendations, correct, as a first read, based on the recommendations, revisions that our council would have provided. But with most certainty, this yellow and blue would be included. And any amendments that you all make, then you'd all see what they recommended. My guess is fiddle with it again, if that's what you all want to do. And then from there, we'd give it back, have them take a look again. And I would anticipate this might take more than two reads, but I'm not all of you, so.
And the reason I ask is, so the yellow here, the 9327 dot one, great, and that's the first line of the code of ethics, is it's governed by this. That's cool. The next paragraph infringes on First Amendment, goes into trying to control non-board speech entirely. But the First Amendment's the biggest problem there, and that's why I question whether it's gone through the attorney at all. The last paragraph is fine, that's typical. But then I go into the social media guidelines. Number nine, we're not mandatory reporters. We don't have to tattle on every communication. The district sees some, they see none. We're in some groups, we're not in other groups. 11 is an IT policy, it's not a social media policy. And 12 is an IT policy, not a social media policy. So they don't belong here at all.
Sean, if you're talking to children about bullying, why would you be in a social media group that bullied people?
We're not going there tonight, Selena.
So, that's a bad representation.
Wait, wait, let me make sure we know. You're talking about the social media guidelines for board members, the points?
Correct.
Okay.
There's a bullet list, one through 12.
And just to clarify, so this policy, essentially verbatim with a few tweaks, including no changes to the code of ethics policy, is in place in many other districts, and has been reviewed by council.
I would love to see the actual policy and then the tweaks, if that's possible. No?
The red line.
What other policy?
No, I'm just responding to what Mr. Lippman just said. He said that this is the Greenwich policy verbatim with a few tweaks. Are the tweaks, like, do we have that that I could look at?
Sure, yeah, we can show red lines against any policy you like. We typically...
I'm just curious.
Yeah, we typically look at lots of precedent, lots of model policies from CAE, from Shipman, from other districts. This does almost verbatim track Greenwich. We can show you the change to the wording, which is very minimal.
Very, okay. So all the appendices and the guidelines are the same?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
But again, 11 and 12 are IT policies. They're not social, those are like West policies. I'm not confident they belong here at all.
But that's fine. I mean, they seem like they're not central to what we're seeking to do with this policy.
No, but they may countermand an IT policy that's in place elsewhere. That's my concern, is having duplication.
And are there concerns that you have with, other than purported First Amendment issues, that you have a problem with the code of ethics section substantively?
I think all of this needs to go through the attorney.
But, right, so presume, because this already has gone to Shipman as a Greenwich policy and been approved, and it's in districts statewide, assuming that they have approved it, do you have commentary on the substance of the policy?
I haven't seen the Greenwich policy versus what's in front of us, so I can't comment on it.
Got it.
I don't know what's been editorialized or added.
So I do, just because I researched this, I do have the Bethany Public School District policy, and actually it does have social media guidelines for board members, which are similar to the ones in this proposed policy. And then I think I have Ellington, I'm trying to confirm the name because I have so many papers, but yeah.
I'm sorry, Tina, what? I just could not hear.
So I have Bethany Public School District, which has a social media policy, and it has social media guidelines for board members, which kind of are similar to the ones in this.
Does it include the IT specific policies?
Yes, yes, 11. And again, I think one thing that Dr. De Silva said, and I know our lawyer also said, this is a proposed, this is the first time it's bringing up, we can take tenants that match us, that our board feels comfortable with, and we can highlight. And if there are things, and once we highlight the tenants that are important to us, we can send it back to the attorney and see if the code of ethics, the proposed code of ethics also match our current code of ethics. Because I did look at our code of ethics, and I think they were revised, I want to say 2008. I could be wrong about that. Yeah. So our bylaws, our code of ethics 9271, the code of ethic bylaws was adopted in 2008. Maybe that is something we could also look in conjunction with this. Because if we're doing this, then it kind of lines up, right? So I did look at that. So we have Bethning, Stonington, and Ellington that have social media policies. There are differences, of course, depending on what the board values and the tenants, or what we would like represented in the social media policy. And we can do that absolutely, and then we can send it back to the lawyer, and then the lawyer can...
So what Jessica had, did, is she, so most of the policies, as Tina just described, actually, from what she reviewed, is that they're based off of a CAE bylaw. So we should just be clear, we keep saying policies and bylaws, bylaws. So every time I say policy, just know it means bylaw. So they're based off of CAE's bylaw. So the districts that she reviewed, they're very similar. Over time, Shipman, as they've reviewed policies, and she looked through some of those, that's where she is saying this language would be what we would, she would recommend be included. One, and then from there, any changes that you make from the proposed bylaw that you have in front of you, including that language, she would then again review. Then the board would have an opportunity to review again. I imagine make additional changes. If that's where you land, then the Shipman could take another look at it, and then you could come back. So that iteration process can happen however way the board sees fit. One recommendation, though, because I think I heard Ms. Morris say, she'd like to see the Greenwich bylaw with the red line from this one. And then perhaps that's a starting point.
Yes.
And maybe it's a paragraph by paragraph. I don't, again, it's up to the board, that's just a suggestion.
Would it be, would it help, Sean, if he got, would you like a lawyer present when we go through this? Is that some...
I think that's important. I, you know, we need to take, there's a lot of subjectivity in some of the editorialization. That needs, there's no reasonable person test that will pass muster in a courtroom with this. That's where the First Amendment comes in. And again, I'm saying there's parts of this that are IT policies, they're not social media policies.
And so I think that's another piece, is you can ask questions. So if you, I wouldn't necessarily recommend that council be here for the debate with the board. However, I think if you went paragraph by paragraph, and then Mr. Lippman can identify which questions come up.
Subjective report harassing or defamatory communications, that can mean a lot of things.
Okay, Sean, let's go through it step by step, so that Wyatt can write the questions, and then he can reach out to council, and then we can bring it back. Does that make, yeah, John, go ahead.
And I haven't read the full policy yet. So, you know, forgive my ignorance if this is clear when I read the full thing. I feel like so much, again, we kind of talk about like social media, and what does that mean? And that means something very different for a middle-aged parent than it does for a younger person, right? And my hope would be that this policy is written in a manner that would allow it to exist beyond sort of the technological currency of what we experience right now. So I just want to be careful that it's not specifically written about if you post this, or if you write this. I think increasingly, our social media usage will be moving to both audio and video, and I want to make sure we're sort of agnostic in this policy as to the medium of communication, if possible.
John, it's in the recommendations by our lawyer. It actually says the rapid speed. And then it says the social media includes a variety of online tools and services that allow users to publish content and interact with your audience. So I think that was a good definition that was highlighted, yeah. And it says, it's examples there, you know, like...
Some of those are dead languages.
I don't even know what...
Yeah, like Vine doesn't exist.
I don't know any of this, but I was glad that this was, it was just an example, but I liked that it was so broad enough, to your point.
I think we need to ensure that this can, you know, hopefully this will make the 50-year mark, like the other policy that we just wrote one day, right? And then, and this might just be my own misunderstanding, but I just want to make sure, since this is a policy, if this is...
Bylaw.
I'm sorry, bylaw, thank you.
I'm trying to do that.
Yeah, thank you. But since this is a bylaw, violation of this bylaw by a board member could include as consequence up to censure by the board if it was so voted on?
Yes. And again, that's, I think, to Sean's point, right? There are some parts that are, the board decides. When it comes to censure, it's really is the board's decision.
You can censure for anything or nothing.
And we can, yeah. And so again, it requires, I mean, there are bylaws state that requires a majority vote of the sitting members and all that stuff. So, I mean, that's why I think we have to ask, we have to see the points that we, when we go through the policy, are the questions that we want. And I think that's one of the questions, how does it reflect? Because I just very quickly went of the code of ethics. I think there was something that said, board members' account, does that mean personal account? Like, that was just something that came up to me, because personal account versus, and I know there is precedence, and there's been case history, and I read about this, when somebody posted, who was an elected official, and posted something, and I think the court ruled that it didn't matter because they posted anonymously. There is precedence there. Again, I'm not a lawyer, I'm just saying that I've read enough that I'm, I think we need feedback. And I think it's important we go through this, and Wyatt can write the questions, and we can talk, go back, tweak it, and then come back with suggestions from legal counsel. Does that help? Okay, all right. So first paragraph, use of internet, social networks. I'm just going to go through it methodically, so that we can all, the first two paragraphs, is there anything that the board would like questions on, for Mr. Lippman to ask?
Can I?
Yes.
Can I just suggest, you know, I personally haven't had the opportunity to review this entire thing. Would it be possible to come back to the board in some form?
Is that okay, Wyatt? Can we table it for now?
It's fine with me.
Okay.
I think having a red line version to stare and compare would be good.
Is that okay? All right. So we will table it and bring it back to the next meeting. And then Wyatt can share the red line version, and you can ask questions.
My suggestion would be to get the red line first.
Yes.
We can forward that.
Yes.
Then when the board comes back on May 13th.
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 13.
You'll have had the opportunity to look at the red line version, and perhaps identify questions, comments, and it might be for a...
Thank you.
Very long meeting.
So please read the packet, the red line version, and if you have any edits and questions for Mr. Lippman to ask the lawyer. Okay. All right. Thank you so much. Moving on, wait, now I lost my...
Enrollment.
Moving on to... Yes, Selena, sorry.
The, the policy for students, school, the media, social media for students, could somebody just forward that to me again, just so I can compare it to this one? Because I think, you know, we need to at least adhere to what they have to adhere to.
I'll resend it to you.
Thanks.
I think I have it.
I know I have it.
No worries.
It's just if you happen to have it handy, it would be great. Because I think as board members, we should at least adhere to those basic standards, right? I mean, we're supposed to be the leaders, right?
I'm just wondering about the code of ethics that you brought up.
Yes.
I wonder, would it make sense to try and do those together?
I think, I think that's what we thought, right? We should bring the code of ethics because they were reviewed in 2008.
So should we, should we try and do that for the next meeting as well?
Do, or just, I mean, we could, we could look at the first, we could do a first quick read about the code of ethics, and we could ask for, if there's a revised Shipman code of ethics, maybe, just to quickly read through it, just so that we can prepare, read through and see if there are any additions or changes from 2008 to 2024? That makes, okay. Okay, Amy? All right, all right. Okay. So can we move on to items of information now? First is the enrollment report. Karen?
Okay. Okay, great. So you'll see our enrollment changes. Since last month, we had three schools that increased by one student, and three schools that decreased by one student, plus the preschool went up by three students, which is a net increase of three since last time we were here. 4,478. And then if you include our 18 to 22 program and outplacement, our total number of students that we serve is 4,533.
Thank you, Karen. Are there any questions for Karen? Yes, Sean?
More, just format, will we also see the projected enrollment for kindergarten in a coming meeting?
So that will be at our next meeting. I can give you those numbers if you want. I do have them. But we, the good news is, the population is increasing. The not-so-good news is, not enough. We needed to move along. We did, I think, break one section.
Down break.
Branchville. I think there may be one that, we're a couple of kids close, yeah. But similarly, when you look at our enrollment, grades one through five, the possibility breaking on the other way down is also a possibility. So it goes both ways in the budget process.
Any other questions for Karen? All right, moving on, Karen, to the staffing report.
Okay. So you'll see some slight changes. We do have some resignations and retirements, and we've done some hiring for next year. But those are the staffing updates since we were last here.
Any questions? Thank you, Karen. No questions.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to correspondence to the board, public comment. Hearing none. A correspondence report.
Yes, since our last meeting, we received nine messages regarding school start times. And we received one message inviting the board to the RHS orchestra concert.
Thank you. We're at the end of the meeting. Do we have a motion to adjourn? Second, all those in favor, eight unanimous. Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.